I want to make sure, okay, we're on. It's okay, it's seven o'clock, we're gonna try to get started. Just wanted to do a little mic test, make sure we heard last time that our lives trained, the mics were not on or they were not up loud enough, so that's why I'm talking and getting started and to make sure we can hear our mics. We're gonna start this evening, our May thirteenth council, public hearing, lots of stuff on the agenda, thank you for coming, and we're going to have an invocation this evening by Mr. John Dubose. Mr. Dubose, if you would come and give us invocation at that.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, whose reign extends over all the earth, we ask your presence here among us this evening. Enable this body in the power of your spirit to seek your will for the city of Easly. Give wisdom and compassion to its leaders so that its citizens may flourish. And we pray, oh Lord, that as budgets are contemplated and decisions are made, that your good work would be done. For this and for all of your goodness towards us, we give you thanks. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hear a speaker humming, so we're just gonna keep right on going, hopefully that's not annoying. We're gonna start tonight with a public hearing regarding the proposed city of Easly fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget at this time, and we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Couch for just a minute.
Yes ma'am, any, anyone that wants to make a comment about the proposed budget, you're welcome to come up and speak at this time, three-minute time limit, and we'll be able to answer any questions you may have. Yes ma'am.
My name's Lisa Borian, I was at, I got lucky enough to be able to come to your meeting at five o'clock, and I have a question. I noticed that some, like the police department, you turned down half of the cameras, the A-.
The flock, the flock cameras, yes ma'am?
Thank you, the flock cameras, and I was wondering, I know that there was, there's like budgeting or increases for other departments, the police department's pretty important, and I was concerned that maybe you could, since you can amend the budget after you pass it, look at your, what you have delegated and see if you can find some way so that the police can get the cameras and not be put off for another year. I mean, to only get half of what they asked for is just another twenty-three thousand dollars. If I had twenty-three thousand dollars, I'd be glad to give it to the police department, but I unfortunately do not, I'm sorry. When I win the lottery, maybe, but anyway, I just, I think the police and the fire department are most important, we can't cut salaries or anything for that because we want the top-notch people here in, in our government and in those positions, so just wanted to know if it was possible, if you guys could look into that.
Yes ma'am, we'll, we'll look at it, we did, we did cut, as I mentioned over in the work session, we, the request, before we started going through the balancing process, we were eight point nine million dollars out of balance, we cut about six and a half to seven million dollars out of all the requests of the budget, and we got our revenue projections up, and then we, then we proposed a four mil increase, which you saw advertised in the paper, and then we were able to back that off, one mil, we found some other funding, moved the funding around, so it's a three mil increase, so to answer your question, we, we did look at that, we tried to fund all the cameras and we were not able to, but as, as we go forward, we can always look at it again, but probably not in this budget. Yes ma'am.
Did anybody else have any questions, or wanted to speak to the budget, or ask any questions about the budget while we're having the public hearings, just come up to the microphone?
My name is Chris Clark, and I have a question in regards to the budget. It is a budget, a working budget, so I wanted to know, is there any way that we can get or see what is the actual accrual against the budget for the last three years, to see how the budget expenditures were actually applied, or is that something that we are not privy to as citizens of Easly?
No, you can get, I think it's posted.
Well, I, I have trouble with the website, cause it is just not easy to read, just like there was no posting for the last meeting that you all had, there was no posting about this ECU meeting, so I'm just a little confused on how that works, and if you could show me, Tom, I would love to be able to go and look and see, because I deal in numbers, and as for the millage increase, I've never complained about a millage increase, I explained this when Justin knocked on my door, but for all of you who put your name on a sign together, and you said you were not gonna raise it, if you were on that sign, it's like a dog, you lay down and you get fleas, so I feel like you really need to honor the fact to these citizens that you will not raise the millage. The only people who can vote yes for millage, in my opinion, are wards two and six, I mean, I'm sorry, no, wards one and six, they never campaigned against millage increases, so thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Anybody else?
The stormwater that you talked about, you only had five sites, five addresses, that you were doing?
We had, we had five sites that we-
Five sites that you were-
That were prioritized based on the amount of money that we had available.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
And that, could you explain to all of us exactly what you do with this, what you're gonna be doing, I mean, is it, you're clearing property, you're clearing drains, could you just explain what exactly that stormwater money's for?
Yes ma'am, the, the stormwater projects that she's referencing, this ARPA money that we had left over from the federal money that was given to us, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars and change, are going toward stormwater projects, and I'm gonna have Eddie speak to what would be done in each project, but it is drainage improvements, there may be, there may be some swales put in, pipes put in, I can't speak to each one of them, but that's generally what will be done, improving the stormwater drainage in the areas that were mentioned.
As he explained, it all depends on what the issue is, and it could be some piping that's installed, we have one job that we will probably, we will have to contract it out, because there's a lot of utilities, and that's, that's a pretty huge project, and it's more than my guys can do, but it'll be swales, it'll be piping, it could be putting some brooms, brooms in.
Eddie, do you have the list of products in front of you?
I don't have that list on, no sir.
One was Inverness.
Inverness, well, uh-
Do we have it on the slide?
It was on the slide.
It wasn't on the slide, you can write it down.
It's not on this presentation.
Oh.
Longview, Longview Terrace will make a couple replacements, and that will be contracted out.
Morningside Drive was one.
Morningside Drive, that were all, yeah, that's three of the five, I think there were five.
Right.
Inverness was over, was over, that was, that one we contracted.
But it was on the list?
Yes, it was on the list. We just completed a reopening, uh, Longview, Longview Terrace.
Oh, you got it done.
Yeah.
And the Longview was actually done.
Longview's got to be done, like, you know, it's like Deerwood, Deerwood, and then one over at Fort Lehigh, and those are, those are gonna be some pipe replacements there, and the Longview, if we have a couple replacements, two fifteen and two seventeen, Inverness way, we will be getting some assistance from Daniel, because we will have to get some easel, uh, right away for that job there, we're gonna run some pipe.
The thing, the thing is, we're providing, we're trying to get it from the bottom of the hill, because when rain hits, it's, I have lakes out, I have lakes out there. The only thing I'm waiting for is fish to be put in, because it's so much water that comes down the street and into my yard.
What, what was I?
Can you, can you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
The question is, I live on the bottom of a hill, and when the rain comes, I mean, the torrential rain comes, I have lakes in my yard, because it just comes down that hill right into my yard, front and back, the only thing I'm missing is, is the fish. So, I don't know if you stopped the fish, but I could, I think I could, I could probably have multiple lakes that people can fish until that's done. On the Botany Park, yeah, on Hale Street, if you go on Hale Street, it comes down like this, and the water comes right on down, and it just, it's a big mud pit, so I was just wondering what the plans are. I met with Ryan, and Ryan said that he can do some things, but that's not gonna take care of the problem.
So you've talked, you spoke to the Nile?
Yes. Kathy Roberts. If you can come out to-
I'll, I'll have to take a moment here.
Yeah, if you would, because I'd like said, if anybody likes fishing, you can cover my yard the next rainy storm. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else about the budget, while we're in this public hearing session where you can ask, get answers? Okay?
I think I read that the budget, the three or four mils would only be about thirty dollars per year in increase for most taxpayers, is that true?
For the average, I think we calculated that on a two-hundred thousand dollar home. And to further illustrate that, every millage increase is like seventy-five cents a month. Anybody else? Okay, last call before we start our council meeting? Going once? Okay. We'll go ahead and move into the council meeting at this time. We'll start with our approval of minutes as written, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, they'll stand as written, and we'll move into our report from council members, starting with Ward one, Ms. Rose Shields. And they've asked, the people at home have asked that you guys speak into the microphones so they can hear you. He, Judge Snoss said that's what he's supposed to-
There we go, all right. Sorry about that, you sensitive people. This past month, we're relatively quiet around, by the way, we did get the speed limit sign up on Couch Road, and the folks at the call meeting were all very happy, but they get to see a change, both folks are not really scared by that blinking sign, but in any event, we do have a, a, a speed indicator on, on Couch, so it's slowing it down, other than that, we're just calling it tick.
So when are they gonna start catching?
We assume there was radar out there this week, it's about, I think, within the last few days, days, few days ago, city did have a bit of a call out there, so I'll probably be the first one to get it ticked, and I'll pay.
Okay, now that we're into the council portion of the meeting, there's not a back-and-forth question and answer, just remember that. Ward two, report?
Assistant Ward- Conversations, I've had several people, they're very eager about the code enforcement officer that is coming on board, and as soon as that person is in place, he's gonna be busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward three, Councilwoman Rainey?
Well, the thing's just stole my thunder, because I've had several people speaking to me about the same thing, that they're looking forward to getting the ordinances abided by and the city cleaned up.
I can hear you.
We're, we're getting static off of something. Is anybody moving them?
We're just gonna have to call them across, without being back, that's the best idea.
Do you hear the static?
Should we turn off the lights? It shouldn't make any difference.
I'm not sure where that's coming from. It's not mine.
I just heard it off, it's like a second.
Oh, good, okay, thank you. Okay, so we've heard from Ward three, you wanna repeat that, because, um-
Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
Oh well, I don't know what the problem is, I'll try to speak a little louder. I said, the thing's stole my thunder, because I've had several people question me about when this person's coming on, they're real excited about it as well, because they want to see the ordinances abided by and the city cleaned up.
Okay, thank you. Ward four is not present tonight, so we'll move to Ward five, Mr. Alexander?
We had a really good meeting with ECU, yeah, ECU, the electrical capacity is good for quite a while, water capacity seems to be good, the sewer is an area that may need, that may need work soon, and some of our plants were coming close to capacity, they've just expanded capacity at two of them, and so, that's really it.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, Ward six?
Yes ma'am, is it on?
Are we on? Can we hear me?
I've attended the farmer's market this past Saturday, and Danielle and others, you did a fine job getting everything organized, I bought two bouquets of flowers for Mother's Day, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that, thank you for mothers everywhere. I hope everybody did have a happy Mother's Day weekend, I wanted to give a short mayor's message, because we've got such a packed agenda, but I do want to say, because of tonight's agenda with the budget hearing and all of the things that we've got for first and second reading, we'll be delaying Ms. Sam's presentation on redistricting, I've announced that a couple of times, that she would be coming in May, we're gonna postpone that. We also have not had any questions from the public, so that gives us a little bit more time for you to reach out with questions, if you have questions, on redistricting and what that's gonna look like, redrawing our wards and how that's gonna affect the city. You can email those questions, because again, this is not a pla, you know, the council meeting has, is not a place for those kinds of questions, you can email contactus@cityofeesly.com, and you can ask questions ahead of time for her presentation. Also, I just wanted to make everyone aware of the progress that we've made in the last four months, we've added our municipal attorney, Daniel Hughes, our CPA, Mr. Herden, we're moving through the voting process to get our moratorium in place, so that our ordinances can be reviewed, have a plan mapped out for smart growth, and tonight, I would like to introduce you to our new building official, Mr. Tor Elstra. Way big, so everybody can see, Tor Elstra. We have a new building inspector that started Friday, Brock, who is getting married this weekend, started a new job, wedding on Saturday, and we'll have our code enforcement officer starting the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth?
June third.
June third, June third, he's working a notice, so we're, we're making great progress, and our budget that we've been working on has received an outpouring of appreciation and support from the community. I received four letters today, I am getting emails from a lot of people, I appreciate all your efforts, I see and hear all the good things done so far, I had another email, we are more than willing to pay the extra thirty dollars or so a year, by so doing, the city can continue to offer excellence in fire protection and police service, and can continue to offer the many parks and recreation facilities we have, and I can continue to brag to the world the gem we all call home. I'm proud to be a citizen of Easly and all that it offers, and ask you to keep the course, don't go backwards. Great job, we're glad to have you, fully support this, great job, glad to see the council and mayor working together for the good of the residents and the employees. Easly needs to be a good place to live and work, I want to thank all of the hard-working employees for doing their important jobs, the citizens willing to take the time to get involved, and the council and mayor for making the tough decisions needed to put Easly back on track. Another email, transparency means everything, keep going, the city is grateful, thank you for caring about the employees of the city as well, things are looking up for Easly, and it makes me happy. Thanks for leading with honesty, integrity, grit, humility, common sense, growth, business-like approach, this is what honesty and transparency looks like, thanks for the leadership. And then finally, this email from a gentleman, first, let me say thank you for transparency, that has been something that we as citizens are not used to, but on to the topic at hand, I have just read the post, and as a citizen, I have seen this as a deterrent, not increasing our millage as we go along for all these years, the city, for those of you not aware, have experienced at least a twelve-year period, I was told earlier by one of our council members that it was actually longer than that, that we've never levied any millage increases recommended by the state, and that sounds good politically, I myself never mentioned millage in my campaigns, never mentioned taxes, but it does sound good politically to say that, but it's left the city struggling and constantly trying to catch up from behind the growth that it's been hit with, so this gentleman says that, you know, it's a deterrent, he left the police force, it was a deterrent to having properly trained professionals, and if we desire to keep those individuals, we need to properly compensate them. I worked as a police officer in the early eighties, a job that I loved but could not support the family I had. I support the increase in the millage for the taxes for the things that are needed by our first responders. So, I just want to say, we've worked really hard, we are getting back on track, but we're having to make some adjustments for some things that we need to do to compensate for the growth that we're experiencing, for the protection, for the services. Our city and the people that work really hard to support it and keep it running are impacted by our current record inflation, and our costs have climbed, our employees should be fairly compensated, a major part of this budget, the majority of the percentage of the budget, is personnel, and bringing these people to the minimum standard of fair living wage. So, I appreciate that few minutes, mayor message, and now we'll go into updates on city activity, Mr. Couch?
I have no updates, I had technical difficulties earlier, and may go back into technical difficulties as well going forward, but currently it's working.
Currently it's working, we're working. Okay, so then we'll move on to citizens wishing to address city council, now Jennifer has a list, and we're not sure if those of you that have already spoken, put your name on the list to speak to the budget, or if you want to speak again, so if Jennifer calls your name and you've already spoken, just say, thank you, I'm done, so Jennifer. Terri Swan?
Thank you Mayor Toward, council members, and Easly city staff. My comments are regarding the progress that the city has made in what I feel is a very short time. Tonight, we're only four months in, and I think we've made great progress. In this brief period, the city has a new CPA, a new qualified, qualified building official, qualified building inspector, and we have a new code enforcement officer coming on. We already see the results of the new CPA, because we are seeing actual postings on, for the, the check registers, that transparency is wonderful, especially when we didn't have it for so long. With the code enforcement officer, I think it would be nice that, to have someone to address certain areas of the city that need some attention and need to comply with city regulations and ordinances that we already have. With our building official and inspector, I'm confident building codes and ordinances will be followed, certainly hope they will, at least they'll be brought to the attention of those that need it. I support the proposed moratorium, so that we can have, that we will have a second reading on tonight, so that our pace of growth can slow down a little bit and catch up with ourselves, and assured that our vital resources can be appropriately applied. Thank you Mayor Toward. I appreciate your commitment to getting Easly back on track, and I know that you didn't, I was out there on that campaign trail too, and I know that you weren't making promises about no city taxes increase, all that, and I know that you're looking out for the best interest of the city, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and the staff are doing, so that we can make Easly break in. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Borian?
Hi, I promise this last time you have to hear me tonight. I was here in February, once you all got started, and I had mistakenly believed the moratorium had started in February, and now you say that the, you're going to do a second reading, so the six-month moratorium won't start till June maybe, or something if it passes today. What I have been asked about is jobs for like the masons, plumbing, construction, electricians, what's gonna happen to them for that six-month moratorium that you do? I understand that you're trying to do what's best for the city, but what about those people with those jobs that you stopped building, then what are we, what's gonna happen to them? If you could just let me know what you guys think, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Easter?
I do want to say what a great job you guys are doing since many hours, it is still a pleasure to come in here and hear people laughing, cutting up, and knock the tensions in the air. First I made a whistle of feather, then I'm gonna make a compliment. The February meeting, there was an individual got up and compared one of our council members to our former police chief, because he lost his job, and they felt that we had a council member getting away with it. Councilman went on to a job site, our former police chief was out of Easly, intoxicated, stumbling, throwing racial slurs, and flashing his badge to let everybody know that he was Easly's police chief. Right off the bat, that's apples and oranges, you have to look at each individual event. Now, as a retired fire chief, if this millage is gonna go and help the fire department, the police officers with pay increases, do it, I'm on fixed income, but I approve it. I mean, we've got to take care of those guys. Every day, they put their lives on the line to protect all of us, we need to show that back to them, and make sure they don't have to work two jobs on the side to support a family. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Cooper?
I know it's probably rare for me, but I come to the podium excited, okay, about what I've seen over the last four months. The CPA is a wonderful- The CPA is a wonderful addition, instead of somebody trying to do it on their fingers and, and figure out what's going on. So I welcome the CPA. I've had an opportunity on several occasions to work with Mr. Couch. I can tell you that he is very knowledgeable. He knows what's going on. He's going to be a strong asset to the city. Did I say everything? If I missed something, I'm, I'm sorry. Also, the Public Works, Police, and Fire Departments have had a very rough couple of weeks. The storms that came through impacted the, the city, having to pick up all the leaves and debris and stuff, and situation that happened at Walmart that everybody's aware of. Then just Saturday, terrible accident on one twenty-three that really showed the true professionalism, the training that we have here in the city in our police and fire and Public Works. And I just want to say thank you. I too, I hate to spend a dime unnecessarily, but everything that's in the budgets that's being proposed, particularly going toward our police and fire, is needed. And I say thank you for that.
Thank you. Jeff Chastain? You didn't want to speak? Okay. That's no problem. Kathy Roberts?
I just have a quick question. One twenty-three, since it's getting really hectic with traffic, are we, are there any plans to expand it, or time the lights, fix the roads, potholes, those type of things? Also, I was just curious, are we still building the botanical gardens? I haven't heard yea or nay.
There's not a response time, so your ward, represent, what ward are you in?
What ward are you in?
Oh, um, I don't, I think you're, uh, I'm.
Anybody else? Jenny McJunkin?
Not to sound like an echo, but thank you. Nice work. I have no problem with a millage increase. It's a small price to pay for people to get paid what they deserve, to do the work that they've been doing for quite some time. And it's certainly a small price to pay to support our fire departments and our police departments, so I'm fine with that. I would also like to encourage you to please vote yes on the second reading of the six-month moratorium. I know you guys can't answer right now, so I'll address this for you. Current building projects that are already in the works, that have been approved, things like that are not going to stop. You're not, they're not just going to stop building. If it's, if it's been started, it'll continue. This will just stop new stuff from getting approved and beginning. I think I'm correct on that. If I'm wrong, you can fuss at me later, but I figured somebody might need an answer to that in the audience. So people that are currently working will continue working. They're not just going to get all of a sudden laid off because of this. This is just to get our ducks in a row, know what we're doing, move forward responsibly, which is what some of you all did campaign on, and I'm proud of you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Okay, thanks, thanks to all of you for speaking out. I probably should have said, we've just had kind of a chaotic night. You can always reach out via email to your representatives before or after the meeting. Okay, so we've got some unfinished business. Our ordinance, second reading. We have an ordinance two, two zero two four oh one, to annex approximately point nine nine plus or minus acres of real property located at five one three four Calhoun Memorial Highway Easely, being shown and designated as tax map number five zero three nine one eight two two nine zero three one, with a zoning designation of general commercial. Is there any discussion, motion? Okay. Is there any? Okay, all in favor of?
This is a donut hole that's surrounded by city property. The owners came to us and wanted to be annexed, and the question I heard was, where is it next to? Bojangles and Popeyes, Popeyes and? Blood connection, I couldn't understand the accent.
Any, any more discussion, council discussion? No? Okay, so, okay, all in favor of annexing the property? Raise your hand. Okay, none opposed? Second ordinance is two zero two four dash zero two, to establish a six-month moratorium to temporarily suspend development and construction of new single-family residential subdivisions, or new multifamily residential subdivisions pending amendments to zoning ordinances and land use regulations. Is there any?
Discussions?
Okay.
Just to clarify, I think someone said that we're at second reading, so this is not currently placed. This is currently in effect, correct?
With the passage of the first reading, my understanding is that it, everything was halted, awaiting the second. Correct, Mr. Hughes?
Under the pending ordinance doctrine, I think it's called.
Is it on? There you go.
That's correct. At the first reading, the council adopted the pending ordinance doctrine, which allowed the city to stop any review of any applications for any building permits or zoning approvals or development plans that would come under single-family residential subdivision or multifamily.
Council members, any further discussion?
We need to get a motion.
I was going to ask.
Settle, y'all start discussing, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just been discussion. Mayor Toward, I have some comments on the moratorium, and I will consider it. I'm aware of what's coming, so I'll try to keep this moving. My family likes to kid me about a statement I made once, we are who we are because of the way that we were. And I think that's a pretty good colloquial description of history. The Easely High School class of nineteen seventy-four, including me, is planning its fiftieth reunion for this year. In nineteen seventy-four, Easely was a small, sleepy, southern textile football town. Those days are gone, and some of the changes that we have seen since then are good, and some of them are perhaps not so good. So how did we get where we are today? One reason is zoning, or the lack of zoning in Pickens County. Pickens County does not have any zoning. We have a development standards ordinance, the DSO, some people like to call it the UDSO, but the county will not even use the word zoning when they refer to it. The story may be apocryphal, but the story goes, the last time the county considered zoning, they had to check the audience for firearms. Another reason that we find ourselves where we are today, and there was mention of this earlier, is the, the taxes or the lack of tax increases over the past several years. South Carolina did not increase the gas tax for thirty years, beginning in nineteen eighty-seven to twenty seventeen. And it took a monumental act to the legislature to get that passed, and then the governor over, the governor vetoed it. But then the legislature did override the governor's veto, but we went for thirty years without having any increase in the gas tax. The city of Easely millage increased from sixty-one point seven in two thousand two to sixty-two in twenty sixteen. So you have fifteen years of virtually no tax increases. I couldn't do research past that, but I think there were other long periods of time where the city did not raise taxes, and I'm sure our elected officials were proud of that, and the citizens, taxpayers were happy with it, but then I'd say that we are that far behind. Pickens County went for long periods of time without raising its millage. The, the millage was raised in twenty twenty-one for roads, but before that, there was no increase for many years. By way of comparison, and I do realize we're not in Greenville County, but Greenville County recently raised its millage for the first time in thirty years, and that is a lot of the, the reason, in my opinion, why we find ourselves in the situation that we do find ourselves in. Another factor would be the great real estate recession from two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen. There was virtually no activity, no real estate activity in that period. I was on the planning commission during some of that time, and we would go for months without having a meeting because there was nothing for the committee to consider. And the recession did end, and a lot of the growth that we're seeing now is growth that would have taken gradually during that ten-year period of time, but then it has taken place in a shorter period of time, and I think it seems like it is more growth, but it would, I think it's growth that would have taken place along the way had that recession not taken place. As far as this particular moratorium, the last annexation that was approved by the city was in December of twenty twenty-two, and that was one and a half acres, zoned, our ten, and then adjoining other property for the same owner. So we essentially had no annexations since then, and I don't think anything has really changed during that period of time. The city did revise its comprehensive plan in twenty twenty-two, revised the zoning ordinance in twenty twenty-three. The land development regulations were adopted in two thousand two, and I do agree that those might need to be reviewed. And Eddie Fortner might be surprised to learn that he is in charge of administering the land development regulations. Some of our candidates who were elected ran on a pledge to stop overdevelopment. What is the difference between overdevelopment and development, except someone's opinion? The proposed mor, ordinance for this moratorium says that the purpose is to provide adequate time to study, review, revise the zoning ordinance and the land development regulation for a period of six months. And I am willing to give that a shot. And I have listened to citizens, listened to friends and neighbors, and they do believe that we might need to take a pause and review these things. Before I get to my final point, I'm concerned about the possible consequences, and it might be unintended consequences of this moratorium. I'm concerned that City of Easely and Pickens County might be sending a message to others that economic development is not welcome here. The TV news and newspaper from November of twenty twenty-three, we have a five hundred million dollar, four hundred jobs coming to Lawrence County, two hundred twenty-eight million dollars and three hundred jobs to Greenville County. I could go on with several other examples like that, considering the time constraints, I will spare you hearing that. But I am willing to give the moratorium six months, and would like to give a personal thank you to Jenny McJunkin during this process. I appreciate the civility and respect that she's given to me. Unfortunately, civility and respect has been in short supply since February of twenty twenty-three, but it is possible to disagree with each other and still be nice to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Do we have a motion? Call for the question. Okay, all in favor of this, passing the six-month moratorium? Raise your hand. All opposed? New business. Ordinance first reading is ordinance two zero two four zero three, to rezone approximately point five two plus or minus acres of real property located at seven forty-five Rock Springs Road, which is the designated tax map number being shown, five zero three eight one one five five zero one six five, from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. Do we have a motion? The call for the question, is any, any discussion, I'm sorry. Questions about this discussion, council?
Explanation from staff?
Would you like to explain the difference, Mario, between the?
The difference between neighborhood commercial and general commercial is that general commercial is a higher density, more usage type area. The request came in to staff, and staff went ahead and addressed it as part of the typical process of, and he, he, they want to request an annex, let me see, to rezone, so we let them have that request. But when it's finally planning commission, the planning commission misunderstood that staff's recommendation and voted to rezone it. We believe it can, that it'll handle as a request to the zoning board of appeals. All they want to do is put a, a sign up there that had, it's an electronics on it. We feel it's best handled as a zoning board of appeals.
Or variance.
A variance, right, excuse me. So what happens if we leave this area general commercial? The other area, other areas around it may also request general commercial also. So we just prefer to leave it as a neighborhood commercial and take care of the sign with a variance.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the council?
Ma'am, I think Mario indicated that applicants here, generally speaking, I think they would be given the opportunity to address council about their request. And then Ms. Davidson, the motion to clarify, I can't, I don't know what the motion was, we just need to clarify it for the record to approve or deny.
To bring questions, comments, is that what you're asking?
The proper motion would be to?
Discuss?
Approve or deny, and then you have discussion.
Oh, okay.
Would you like for me to speak?
Yes.
Uh, yes, my name is Jeff Chastain. I'm speaking for my son, Jordan Chastain. He owns the dance studio. And he wanted to put up a signage on his, on the building, not on the road, but actually on the building. And the type of sign that he wants to put up is not allowed under neighborhood commercial. We've had some flyaway banners out by the road, and we've been recommended for having those out there, so we had to take those down. So we're really limited. We, we put up a, we were allowed to put up a banner. Our banner is, is very expensive and it's very worn, so it's going to have to come down, you know, this season, this month. And instead of spending money on another banner, we thought it'd be, he thought it'd be best to, to buy a, a permanent sign that he could advertise his, his business on. And that's, the, the building's already there, so I'm not sure, we can't ever, you know, make it anymore. I forget the terminology that, that Mario used, but that, and I, as I understand it, it's very hard to get a variance on a zoning request. So not sure how we need to address that.
Well, basically, the difference with the variance is more realistic. With not having that legality of saying, you can have a sign up from such a time, such a time, different colors. The zoning board of appeals would dictate the time the sign has to be on, where the sign can be. It can't be flash, it'll dictate all this thing, and it comes up in general commercial.
Okay.
And I would go into the zoning board appeals, I would recommend approval of that as stipulations.
Okay.
So I think it would be done better that way, instead of zoning you as a general commercial.
Okay.
Okay, um, no offense, the person buying this property knew that he was buying it under these conditions, that it was neighborhood commercial. I feel like even though he can apply for a variance, it's like moving up a can of worms. Could we not address this when that zoning ordinance is redone to maybe try to accommodate a, a, a signage or something that would be great across the board? Because, you know, we have ordinances for specific reasons, and variances are not supposed to be given willy-nilly. They're supposed to be, um, extenuating circumstances. And because he wants a bigger sign or whatever, does not constitute as an extenuating circumstance. So, you know, I would suggest that maybe it needs to be addressed in the rewrite of the zoning ordinance to accommodate a little bit better than what they've got now.
Well, this situation is really unique. He is, he is facing, uh, non-residential zones. Uh, it's not like he's going to be siding with slight, uh, residential areas. We'll, 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 we'll.
We're, we're, we're basically right across street from the new roundabout that's being built, when the new gas station's being built. I'm assuming that gas station is general commercial. I don't know that for a fact, but, I mean, we're a stone's throw from the gas station, so.
But you're still in neighborhood commercial.
We are, but things have gra- uh, definitely have changed there since we've purchased that property.
And variance would be asked for by anyone at any time. Doesn't mean, granted, doesn't mean, so, so variance can be requested.
But the question tonight is not rewriting an ordinance, it's passing or voting on passing this or not. So exploring his other options, I guess, was the question, so.
Mayor, if I could, so to clarify Mr. Hughes's comment, what was the motion? Was it a motion to approve or the motion to deny?
The motion was for discussion, but we just learned we should, we shouldn't.
Parlance, proper rules don't really recognize as a motion for discussion. So once you have a motion to approve or deny, then you open up floor to discussion, and the council can decide to vote yes or no. Um, so at this time, you know, we can consider Ms. Davidson's motion as a, y'all have already done the discussion, so I think at this time, you have opportunities to make.
A motion.
Make your motion, and then proceed with the vote.
Clarify your motion, is it for approval or disapproval?
Well, the motion for, for, that to approve or deny, and then it's, so then that's a discussion, correct? Okay, so I suppose I know, you know, the motion is to, or to approve or deny, so you have to go. You have to go, and that's why.
You picked one. Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second? Second, we have motion to deny, is there any discussion?
But this is just a point of, and maybe the city attorney. Or, is it not customary for all the motions to be put in the affirmative? So I mean, are we actually going to vote, are we going to, are, does our yes vote mean deny? So if you, if you vote to approve Ms. Davidson's motion, you're voting to deny the motion to resign, or deny the zoning application? Okay, I guess I, I guess I was thinking it would be stated in the affirmative, the mode, and then, okay. Just so everybody knows how, what voting yes or no means.
So we call for the question. All in favor to deny the request to rezone from general to neighborhood? If you are voting to deny? Okay, thank you. Alrighty, next up, ordinance two oh two four oh four to provide for the adoption of a city annual operating budget. Its execution in effect for the fiscal period of July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Discussion?
I'm moved that we adopt the budget.
I second.
All in favor of?
Discussion.
Is there a discussion? I'm sorry, is just a discussion? Council discussion, we've already done the public part.
I want to thank the mayor, the city administrator, the finance director for the work on the budget. This budget meets the essential needs of the city. However, it contains a property tax hike at a time when many citizens are struggling. We've had a tax increase every year for the last four years, and I believe there are other ways to meet our needs without a tax increase. Therefore, I'll be voting no.
Is that discussion or call for question?
I call for questions.
Okay. All in favor of passing our budget? Yes.
To follow up, some of us are caught between devil and deep blue sea here.
Okay.
It takes money to operate the city. Thank you. Uh, it, uh, it's going to take money to operate the city, and we all know that. And I'm in favor of the millage increase. I don't have a bit of problem with passing that law. I've got a bit of a problem with the stormwater runoff fee going from thirty bucks for a five thousand square foot plot, which most of our yards is twice that big, so you're looking at, uh, a good bump there. I'm not so worried about the large retailers, uh, they're all doing okay, I suppose. They can pay that, but this also applies to nonprofits. So the hospitals look at a big bill, well, Christmas is doing okay too, but the churches are not going to be real happy campers. And a couple of the big churches, Rock Springs or my church, First Baptist, have got the parking lots, they're looking at a large bill there. I'm thinking doubling that is a, is a big bite. I'd rather see us go up a smaller amount there and pass the, even the four meals. This is, this is just, it's just hard, you know, to, to throw that big a, a hit over on those big old parking lots. So if, based on that, I, I can't go yes tonight myself.
Any more discussion?
And I would like to thank the staff, all the staff, for all their work on the budget and their continued work on the budget in that when the article was posted in the paper at four, it has come down to three. The city's going to continue their work. If there are changes, um, that will, that will be revealed next month. But right now, ob- it's obvious they have put forth a tremendous effort just in the past two weeks. And at this point, I will be voting in favor of the budget.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Okay. All those in favor of passing the first reading of the budget, raise your hand. All against? Okay, we have three, three. That's a tie, I'm thinking that's a no. That's a no.
It's a no.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have ordinance two zero two four oh five to name the three fields complexes Field One located inside of J.B. Red Owens Recreational Complex in honor of Thomas Greg Powell for his exemplary service for over thirty years to the City of Easley Parks and Recreation as director. Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor to rename the Field One in honor of Greg Powell? Raise your hand. Okay. None against? And then, new resolution. We have Resolution two zero two four oh three to accept certain roads from Easley Town Homes, Inc., into the City of Easley Roads Network. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion. Should approve the resolution?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor to accept these roads from Easley Town Homes into the city roads network, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. That is it for our agenda. Thank you for sitting through this tonight. If we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.